Alright, so we will get started here. It's June 12th. Plenary board, we have a quorum. Just barely. First, we're gonna hear Jonathan McLean from 339 Long Hill Road. The applicant is seeking a reduction in bond being held for the construction of the common driveway.
Good.
Thank you, John. So, I don't have much of a presentation other than to refer us for the calculations and the technical aspects of the bond to Erica. She's kinda on board with our presentation. And the requested amount is based on work approvals performed by the town consulting engineer. So, I guess at this point, I would just defer in comment from Fred to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, you have that?
We have.
Yep.
So, this is the letter.
I saw your letter.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure we're all reading the same.
So, John had written a letter to the board requesting that. Is yours, did you print it out in color?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, so you see the various ones. And the red was the last January's reduction and blue was what's been completed since then. With the total down the bottom, what is left of twenty twenty-three thousand.
So, the blue is...
What's been done since January.
What's been done since, so twenty-seven.
I'm sorry, the blue, yes, what's been done and what's been, what is remaining.
So, right now, as of today, we have twenty-three thousand nine hundred. Right?
That's what will be remaining.
Oh, after today.
You do have the one forty?
Yep, one forty.
John?
Now, there's a discrepancy between my statement of what's remaining and the twenty-three nine. Not a discrepancy, but I just wanted to add that the higher number in my letter of application reflects the one point five.
Yeah, yeah, we have that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's handwritten on ours. Yep. Oh, you don't have that, she handwritten on ours.
Gotcha.
Yep.
And I haven't did the math and checks before the meeting to make sure.
As I say, well, what is twenty-three nine, what is thirty-five? Okay.
Yeah, I very quickly said, okay, yep, plus one point five is...
So, in short, our numbers coincide with what Erica and Fred have on the original bond amounts.
Fred, you're happy with the amount, it's leaving a thirty, or thirty-five eight fifty.
That would be one with one point five.
Yeah, yeah. So, what does that leave to do?
What is left?
Essentially, the binder coat and the signs.
Okay.
Already supplied.
Also, the fourteen six for the binder and...
Not the binder, the top coat.
I missed, well, I guess the top.
And the signage.
So, there's three. And so, there's number nine, ten, and eleven. I'm sorry, nine, nine, and eleven.
Okay, yep, everything on the bottom, I mean, yep. Looks like least detail. As-built plans we're waiting for.
That work has been done. It's been generated in a red line. It's not finished and signed, but that's kind of...
Really, what's been, what is left to be done, let me go back and step, is number nine, the second pile, which is the top cost?
Yep.
Ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Yep.
That comes up to the twenty-three.
Yep, that's good.
And even some of the, some of ten has been done already.
Okay. You have grass growing on about eighty percent.
Some of the asbills, well, now the asbills are probably ninety percent complete, I just picked it up today from Deshawn.
Yeah, we wanted to get to that point before we do the top coat. You know, we've been able to, physically able to do the top coat for some weeks now, but before I, that's kind of the final step. I can't, it's really hard for me to get machinery back on to do anything major. So, I wanted to make sure that the engineers, the design engineers concurred that we put everything in the right place. So, now, we've got that gut check performed.
And Deshawn has checked, done it, and checked it. I picked it up today, they say they don't see any issue, I haven't looked at it yet. But it's still, we're still gonna hold that amount anyways.
Yep.
Even though, so part of this twenty-three nine is realistically done.
Okay.
But we're still holding it, it was not hundred percent accepted.
I think that's, and then you figure another month or so and...
I would like to thank Stuner, it really, and I have, in conversation with Fred, I have a little bit of tweaking to do with the excavator. Some minor duck cleanup work, and really amounts to a day or two's work. Our, the machines are waiting there. We were just waiting for the asbilled approval to perform that, so we'll jump on that now. And then, it really is up to how quickly the payers will respond.
Christmas.
But I haven't paid them for the first portion yet, so...
So, there's some...
It could be that they'll come back rather soon.
Okay.
Very good.
Minor scratch, you said.
Yeah, I know.
I'll move that we approve the request release one hundred and five two thirty-three from the bond for three-three A Long Hill.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Wish they were all listening.
How is that funny, is that the funky shape of this one, right? This one? It was like...
It's a matter of opinion, yeah. It's like dreams. Pods, different, different pods, all kind of...
Pod living.
Yeah, right, right.
Is the house built?
Yeah.
Kind of shit and driving by.
If, oh, let's do an inspection, but I think that's your prerogative, right? As the enforcing firm.
Check out the by two minutes.
That's right, the driveway is still technically under construction under your supervision.
Can you see it from the rotor, from the...
Good, well.
I'm saying, can you see it from?
The driveway, from the common driveway, yeah.
Yes, you can stay on the common.
Nice view of it.
Kinda wanna see it.
First take, go up there. Yeah, everybody else goes up, see it in the rocks, so...
If I remember, there was like three separate sections with connecting things to it.
It doesn't look like that, though.
It looks like that in the back there.
And from the aerial view more.
Yeah.
But not from the front, it looks...
It's a little more continuous.
Yes, yeah.
Is it contemporary, or is it... No?
It's a, it's a contemporized farmhouse. Look, I'm throwing the word look.
Alright, well, great.
I'd let you name it.
I can see you wanna get the puck drop, so...
Other, what? Thank you, John. We carry on without you.
I see that, do you know?
We got it.
We've already approved it.
So, I'll follow up with you.
I moved it, James, I can...
I'm going to read it.
I will. And who gets your best? See you later, John.
Mike just, he just texted me, he said I could be there in thirty-five minutes, I was like, we're canceling.
I already canceled that, they all know, well, at least one of the neighbors that was...
Alright. So...
Are they still gonna come, at least give us some update?
No.
They can't.
We can't hear it.
I know.
And you've got some letters back and forth in the packet, but other than...
I mean, we can't even talk about it, even if he accuses himself of, well, then it's not...
Technically, they're not here to clarify or...
Alright. Alright, so Century Mill Estates, Andy is not here yet.
He's in my A at the moment.
Okay, so I will, I will move that we appoint Eric as chairman for the next two weeks.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, two more weeks. I feel like you guys are stringing me along.
I was just...
You were off on, yeah.
No, we're... They're just begging, begging things up.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Minutes?
Minutes.
Still learning, guys, still learning.
Yeah.
I didn't, I just read through them, I didn't notice anything.
Yeah, I'll throw that in something. Oh, it's very thorough as usual. So, this is April twenty-fourth.
I got one to do that. I've been doing this for two hours. Yeah, and also, I refuse myself, that's good.
Need a pen?
Figure motion? Move that we accept the minutes from May eighth, twenty nineteen, and April twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Three hundred and sixty-six.
And I just emailed your entire group, we no longer have a quorum for that topic this evening.
Okay.
Okay.
So, it's off for tonight?
It's off for tonight, it's gonna be pushed to the twenty-sixth.
To the twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
What, do we know a time?
I don't know, yeah, I don't have time.
Thank you.
Oh, did you send James?
Yeah.
Oh, you did? Oh, I think, is Mark missing on this one, or was he not?
Maybe that's a bit too soon. No, James didn't send it. No, where was I, just, there were two of them.
There's two different sounds.
Alright, Andy. Next up, we got Century Mill Estates, Plan Board to Review Bond for phases two and four, Bond Release Process Schedule, waiting to work completed in these phases. The Board to Review the Streetlight Propose that the other section is going to do, although no pond relief. Let's do the streetlight, because that's easy. That's easy. Let's see, that was right here.
So, this is the one that DRB suggested, right?
Correct, yeah, and I had forwarded it to Fred. And I don't know if they, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the detail, that, or the...
Let me see. Unfortunately.
I mean, that doesn't give you a whole lot of information, that, I mean, there's so many different ones to choose from, I just printed out one in particular.
Yeah. And we understand now that you have Fred's list, it's gonna be some catching up, I guess.
I mean, I take it you haven't looked at this stuff, so maybe we talk about it in another meeting.
Yeah.
If you could take a look at that website and do some research and figure out exactly which one.
Do you have the letter Frank proposed?
It's, I don't have it on me, I have it probably somewhere in my office. At the time, I don't believe the board was really particularly fond of that one.
I don't think, was it not down lighting?
Yeah, it was. Is this, I'm assuming this one is approved by the, is an association?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. I would have to look at their, at their website.
Can I give you an answer on this? Is the board okay with this?
Yeah.
That's style, I mean, you have to go and spot the one that's the right height and all of that, but I think, like, the actual fixture. It's not necessarily more.
Yeah, yeah, and this is what DRB suggested, so we're good by it, I think.
Okay, if you wanna, if you want to, and most subject can be looking at the cost of proof this, then I could like, wouldn't have to, if it's okay with you.
Do we need to vote to approve the light fixture?
I believe you do, only because if, there's nothing shown on the plan for lighting, so I think it would be good for the record.
Well, just make the motion that he approves, you know, if Andy's good with it, we're good with it.
Great.
Yeah? No?
Well...
I mean, one of the issues, one of the issues with what Frank, or what Fred, was this, the height of the pole that he was...
Right, so, I guess if, Andy, if you could do a little research, figure out exactly the fixture that would work for that site, and then, I mean...
Okay, alright, okay.
Yeah, and then at the next meeting, if I have the information, the board will go on it.
That's fine.
Does this, does this hold us up at any point?
I don't believe so, I don't know.
Alright, so, bond. That what we might do next?
I think so, we, I would agree with that.
Well, you have the insurance policy.
Oh, that's what?
The next easiest thing is probably the easement.
Easement? Oh, for Kai's property?
Yeah.
At this point, it really is in the balls of your heart. The town's already reviewed it, Kai's attorney reviewed it, I had no issue with his edits, so it's really...
I have a couple comments.
Okay.
Well, we don't have these.
I didn't know we were, yeah, it's not technically on the board.
Well, how about...
I didn't think it was an issue.
Well, my comments, these are pretty, one of them's very simple.
Okay.
It says that the easement states, the easement, I want to quote, "The easement granted here and shall terminate when the way extending north of Mill Pond Road A is completed through phases one and three." And I think it really could just say three.
Yeah. Um...
Yeah, because we just really care about that connection.
Um, well, yeah. I mean, technically, but there needs to be some termist somewhere. So, if they build out three and not one, then I guess there needs to be a termist at the end of phase three.
We'll repeat the process again to three.
Yeah. Yeah, because we really just care about the connection from two to three.
Right, well, at least for this.
For this.
Yes.
I mean, with then, that way they, you know, they top coat the road, and it's all done.
Right.
Um, he can get his lawn put in earlier, perhaps earlier.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, it really is contingent on phase three being acceptable.
Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I think that change was probably from the town council.
No, it was a bit from the beginning.
Oh, okay.
I just never...
I think so, because phase one is the one that's at the very end, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah. I'm okay with that.
And then, um... It says all work shall be conducted to the satisfaction of the town of Bolton, and to the satisfaction of the grantor. Before the word satisfaction, can we put reasonable? Because we don't have a plan here, that's the only reason why.
I found that out.
May I ask you more?
And then...
I'm trying to decide, you know, I mean, you know, if Kai or, you know, ten years from now, whoever owns your house, you know, what's the difference between reasonable satisfaction and satisfaction? You know, they're gonna, whoever has the house is gonna have to say, yeah, that's, you know, that's as good as I'm gonna get, so move on and I'll touch it up later. You know, I'm not sure the word reasonable, and it's just, you know, it's like, yeah, I'm okay with, you know, it's as if they say, I'm okay with it, as opposed to I'm ecstatic with the work you did. You know, I don't know what the, you know...
I don't think anybody can ever argue that people have, that it's okay to be reasonable. Leaving something up to someone's sole discretion is different. It's a bit...
Well, I mean, yeah, but I mean legally, if the homeowner, he has to say, yeah, I'm okay with the work that was done, you know, that means they're satisfied with, I'm not sure.
By reason, reasonably, but if you don't...
I mean, I, I'm, I would say if the lawyers didn't put it in there, then I wouldn't, I wouldn't, it's adding in the level of...
Ambiguity.
Ambiguity that we don't necessarily want.
The problem is though, you're leaving, you're making me, putting me in a position where that somebody can say, well, you know, be unreasonable. That's the problem. I mean, it's my, how can you argue with reasonable?
Well, it's just that we determine reasonable.
Well, you're reasonable, and Kai's reasonable, and Fred's reasonable, and my reasonable are at least five different things.
Yeah.
I understand, but I don't wanna sign that, I don't wanna sign a contract where somebody can be unreasonable.
Well, it doesn't say, it doesn't say unreasonable.
No, but it says to be a satisfaction, reasonable satisfaction, seems to made it make sense. I've never had anybody argue with, it's a term reasonable.
I don't think that's uncommon language.
What?
I don't think that's uncommon language, like, if you have a holdback, a reasonable satisfaction. If it, you know, if there's a judge and there's, then there's discretion.
It seems like if we ever got into a debate, we would be debating on the relative definition of satisfaction versus relative definition of reasonable satisfaction.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Is there, I don't know, is there, if we ever find ourselves in that situation...
We're in trouble.
We're in trouble to begin with, yeah.
I don't know, I'm not in the dirty, but seeing, that's what we're arguing with, though, is that right? The definition of what's...
Well, there's a big difference between someone saying, like, in a contract, in my sole discretion.
Because we're saying the grantor, which is, the grantor, which is the owner of the property, right? Grantor is owner of the property.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, I don't, I don't care either way, I don't know.
Well, I do, because a homeowner has to do the work.
What I'm saying is, from my perspective, I don't, you know, I'm not bothered either way, so, I don't know. You, it sounds like you are.
I, I'm not a lawyer, so I, I'm not sure how a judge would look at them differently, if it ever came to that, which, I mean, I don't...
Well, one is somebody's, one is in someone's sole discretion, and one is that somebody reasonable, has to be at least reasonable.
You have a judge, yeah. Either way, you're talking about going before somebody determining if it's satisfactory, if they should be reasonably satisfied or not, right? If you just...
No, no, you can have a contract say, in your sole discretion, which means you can be unreasonable. That's what that means, in your sole discretion, you know...
I'm not a lawyer. You wanna just, just signify, bring the town council?
I can, yeah?
I mean, do, I mean...
It doesn't say at his sole discretion, it says that he needs to be satisfied and the town needs to be satisfied.
Correct.
So...
Since we don't have a plan, right, that we're attaching.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Well, we do have a plan...
Not for the driveway.
Not for, not for, you know, but we do have a plan for what will be, what it will be restored to.
We don't have a plan for the driveway and the work in his area. And I, I mean, we had the...
There's a budget, right?
Yeah, we have the original plan before we added the turnaround.
Yeah.
That's what needs to be there.
No, what he's saying is, that's to the roadway and the driveway between the finished roadway and, and the edge of the curve is a gray area. It's not, there is no design for it.
It's his yard.
But it's not designed for it, just like there's no design for the other driveways.
Well, again, there is, because the original plan showed what his driveway was gonna be, where the sidewalks were gonna be, I agree, what was gonna be there, so...
What original plan? What original plan?
I don't know, the one from thirty years ago on this project's turnip.
Didn't show the driveway's, they didn't...
They don't show driveways on, there's never been a driveway shown?
No.
On, on your...
And there's no driveway detail, I understand what Andy's, I'm not agreeing with the reasonable, but I'm just saying there's that area in between that's gonna be reworked. That has no specs to it, right?
Yes.
We need to have some specs to create a budget for it, right?
Which is... Yeah, well, we did, we saw that in bond estimate, you know, talking about what's what.
I mean, I, I don't know if we're overcomplicating this, my expectation is when that temporary cul-de-sac's removed, the driveway is extended to where it needs to be. And it's graded smoothly, so you don't have, the current driveway drops down, and then there's a, you know, very sharp second part of driveway, it needs to be graded smoothly. As if the driveway was there from, you know, very beginning. And then, the grounds around it, there should be some dirt fill-in to account, to account for the grading of the driveway. And then, some, couple of sprinkler heads installed, and then grasp it over the top. And that's what I think, both based on the original punchless item, Andy, that we created stated, and every conversation I've had with...
I'm not disagreeing with anything, I'm just asking for you to agree to be reasonable.
Is what you just said, your definition of reasonable? Is it always...
Yeah, but I think this, this is a legal document, so people should, you know, I don't, I've never had anybody not agree to be reasonable. Unless, unless they specifically say, no, I want it in my sole discretion, so that means I can be unreasonable, I can do it for any, for any reason.
So, I don't know, I just have the town council, or if the board is uncertain about that word. And we can sign out on it next.
Can I ask you, so you're saying there's no plan for the driveway, but we have a driveway, and we have grass, and we have sidewalk, I mean, that's written down somewhere, right? Is that just the asbilled?
No, the lots aren't designed. Oh, so do you know, you as a board don't approve lot designs?
Right. We don't approve sidewalks, so...
Sidewalks is, yep. No, has to be done. Correct. And that's all part of the right-of-way, there's gonna be work beyond the right-of-way. That is a gray area to meet, match back in, to make it smooth, as he's saying. To make sure that the grass is back up to the edge of the, it's normal, normal, normal work.
Normal work, it's a...
And Andy, if I wanna hear him, it's just saying, he doesn't wanna be caught thinking in his idea, in his mind, he did the normal work, in the owner's mind, it isn't good enough. And, but I'm not agreeing with reasonable, but I think that's what you're saying, though, right?
Yeah.
Yep. There is an undesigned area that has to be there. And it's finished, and it gets in, and everything else, I mean...
I think, Eric, you're asking whether, what I was asking for seemed reasonable, and Andy's your way...
Well, I think it seems reasonable, I was asking if Andy wants to...
Yeah, I'm just clear, Mike, that's, that's in this document, and it reads, if I can read it. Said driveway extension shall be properly graded so that it is level with the existing driveway.
Okay, now, like, for example, level with the existing driveway, your driveway is going down like that, so how could it be level? What is that, I don't even know what that means, because there's all different levels to your driveway.
Okay, so maybe that's what we have to clarify.
Well, no, how do your driveway, if your driveway's on a slope, because your house is on a hill, so when you say...
I think it's just saying, parallel to the driveway.
Well, currently...
Smooth transition into the...
Yeah, so currently, the driveway hits a ground level shorter than what it will be. We just don't want, we just pave a flat area, and then you're gonna have this very abrupt change in grade. And you essentially have two pieces of the driveway, and so, we're just asking for that grade to be smoothed out.
I mean...
I agree.
I don't know, Andy, I, I don't, I don't like, I don't like the tone of it.
Tone of what?
I don't know, it just seems like...
Reasonable?
I mean, I don't know, I just don't know where your angle is all.
I want people to be reasonable, that's my angle.
Well, I think Kai's being reasonable. Yeah, I think he is being reasonable.
But in the document, that it's reasonable.
Well, I don't think we need to change it.
Okay, well, then, I can't agree to do work for someone in their sole discretion. People have to agree to be reasonable, there's nothing wrong with people being reasonable. If people aren't reasonable...
I never took that easement document as being unreasonable.
No, but it, it, it leaves everything in everybody else's control. I'm not agreeing to that, I'm not agreeing to do whatever Kai wants. I'm agreeing to do a reasonable job. I know how to build a driveway, I mean, I've got all those houses out there, I know how to do it, but...
I'm not a lawyer, can you just ask, ask town council?
So, so part, so part of the work would be cutting the driveway back and adding fill to give a nice transition from the slope to the road? I mean, is that, is that part of your expectation?
Well, so, so... This is very minor, what we're doing here.
Wow.
So, what language?
Right, right, but, but if it's only marginally acceptable now, it's not gonna get any better there.
What?
I mean, if he, if he doesn't make the transition from his driveway to the, to the cul-de-sac now, he's not gonna like just bringing the driveway over, so are you, are you bringing fill in to give a better transition there?
The transition that's there now is, is, there's not, there's no bad, here's a picture of it.
I mean, that, that, well, I mean, but that's not quite the impression that I'm getting from listening to Kai, so... So, what language can we put into that document to state, to protect Andy and to protect the homeowner as well, whoever it is at that particular time?
Otherwise, you have to get a claim.
If you feel like the word level is not precise enough, I'm happy to...
I mean, you just wanna reasonably smooth transition, I mean, that's all it is.
Yeah. That's what I took from the word level.
What?
So, that's what I took from it, a smooth transition.
His driveway is on an angle, so I don't know how to get a level. Level to me means this is level, right? So, how can a driveway that's going down a hill, that's meeting a flat area, ever be level?
I took it, I took it in relation to the driveway. Level in relation to the driveway.
I'm very happy with the language, as long as, as long as the word reasonable is added. Because I know that this document is not a plan, it's not. And I'm not asking for changes to the wording, I'm just asking for the word reasonable.
That's a change.
Well, I'm not asking for the description.
I just think we should run it through council to see if we can, again, to protect you, Andy, and also the homeowner at the time, whoever it may be. I just think we should run it through council to see if we can, again, to protect you, Andy, and also the homeowner at the time, whoever it may be. Because I, that's, that, I understand, I completely understand your point, you put up the sole discretion, if the homeowner doesn't like it, I might sign off on it, I don't like it. But at the same time, you know, we also don't wanna, we don't wanna screw the homeowner.
Right.
You know, so, you know, I mean, I mean, if it's getting a little better description of what you're expecting and make sure that Andy signs off on it and and attaching that to the easement language, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it it sounds like we all agree in principle what the outcome needs to be.
Yeah.
We're having a little bit of a hard time, all agree on the words on paper that reflect that agreement of principles, so I'm fine with start putting that language. Whether it's council thinks reasonable is okay to prepend, or we change the word level to something more descriptive, but it sounds like we're not gonna solve it here.
Talking grading, smooth transaction, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of different.
Yeah, sure.
Smooth transition, sorry.
Smooth transition, yeah.
Uh, you know, through that, so I'd just like to get the legal on it.
Yeah, I agree. Can we get that, do you have a policy next meeting?
I, I mean, it's such a minor change, I'll try and see if town council can review it beforehand, but what I was actually gonna say is it's so minor. If town council agrees to that language, can we just move, can can Andy and Kai just, you know, begin that process moving forward?
Do we have to?
I I didn't even think it needed to go before the board again, to be honest with you, I mean, I don't think, because I I didn't hear any comments from you. I've gotten edits from Kai, I thought they were really minor.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I hope, you know. Draft whatever you wanna draft, Andy.
What?
Give it, draft whatever you wanna draft.
Well, I'm only adding that one word, right, I'll just add it in and then get it to town council tomorrow.
Phase one, yeah.
Get rid of phase one and then add reasonable, and then I'll have town council review.
Yes.
Put it in twice.
Yeah, well, once.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
Because we're talking about the driveway.
Yeah.
Even something that, you know. Well, well, even if at that set time, the plan has to be approved by the planning board, and it gives us a little bit of a.
I don't think we have to review the easement.
Well, this is not a typical situation, so.
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah. Yeah, do whatever you're gonna do, like Erica said.
Yeah.
You know, I think it's kind of between you guys.
Or acquire a plan, we should get it done now. But I mean, it's a waste of money, putting either driveway, this is like ten feet, it's not very complicated. It's driveway.
Yeah.
Build driveways all the time. You don't really need a plan to do ten feet of great work.
So in your opinion, we don't have to do anything, they can do it and have town council review it?
Well, if you have to pay, it's up to the boards, if you wanna see the final document and sign off on it, I can certainly do that, we can do that at the next meeting.
Um, we haven't done that yet, right? We haven't signed off on it, is it?
Um.
Or did we?
No, no.
And you expected we would, or no?
I I thought in discussions with you, you talked about just getting it done, like it didn't need to go before the board again, I thought that's what we had talked about, so I just, just moving forward.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, do what you need to do between you guys, if you don't mind, send it to us, so we can have town council review it. Is that cool? Put.
Oh, no, he he did it, I just wanna have one word. Reasonable, I mean, that's it.
It's, it's fine, let's keep moving, I can handle that, it's not a big deal.
Okay, thank you.
I I just have one question about, uh, related to this, so, um, there is budget that's being allocated or reserve, on reserve for this work?
Bond.
Yeah.
Yeah, there'll be five, never.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this language doesn't change the the amount, okay.
No, no.
Okay.
No. I mean, one of the things I try to do when I build houses is, 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 you know, is, uh, have my contracts be set up in a way so that I can satisfy the customer. If you have a contract, set up some, can't satisfy somebody, it's not good.
I mean, that wording is just to get the easement removed. Essentially, that's nothing to do with the bond. The the, what you're talking about, the document, it's just to get the easement removed.
What do you mean by remove it?
Extinguished, I guess, whatever the wording is.
No, this is the, this is the language to put the easement in place and not remove it.
No, it's, it's when you can get, when the easement's fulfilled, or when it's turned back over.
The work is.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah.
That's true.
So, essentially, you know, it was between you two.
So, just to make sure that we're all clear, in terms of the bond, for the work to be done, done on Kai's property, we're gonna hold back that money from the bond that we're already, we already have. Okay, I just gotta make sure that it was everyone's agreement, 'cause I could see that coming.
Has nothing to do with the bond.
Did, did.
But this, the easement plan has nothing to do with the bond.
What are the amount we've done?
No, no, I know, but I just, I don't feel like we've been very clear about that, and I know Kai just asked the question, so I wanted to make sure we're all on agreement. Um, it's, it's in the package here, it is four thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Yep.
Is that the one and a half X or is that the wrong number?
That's just the wrong number.
One and a half times in this particular instance, wouldn't work. This isn't town money, it's not, it's not to build a road.
It's part of the bond.
It shouldn't be part of the, the town can hold the amount of money, but not one and a half times. This isn't, this isn't a road bond, this is, that's why originally I said this really shouldn't even be an easement, it should be a part of the, I mean, it becomes. But in any event, there's no reason to have one and a half times on on on, uh, this has nothing to do with the town.
It is in my bond estimate, this.
Yeah.
Right. This is, right?
It's not in your bond estimate.
No, it's not.
Well, we talked about releasing up to road acceptance, up to ten percent. You're starting at ten percent, which is seventy thousand plus, plus on top of the ten percent, the easement bond, the forty-six hundred.
Right.
So you're saying, because it's not part of Fred's.
It's not town, it's not, it's not.
We have no, we have no right to take the one point five? That's what you're saying?
I mean, it's, I don't know if it's.
Well, I mean, tech, technically, it would be the, I mean, if if you walked and the owners in in phase three continued the road through, the town's gonna be on the hook to, or that, what's happening, that bond is gonna be there to to remove that turnaround, so it is part of a road.
It is part of the road, since it's the curb.
It is part of the road, because we're we're removing the the turnaround and and and.
It is part of the road.
Not, not, not Kai's work is not part of the road.
It's not.
I don't know, how does a driveway become part of the?
It's not the driveway, but the sidewalk.
Berm, berm for sure.
Right, well, that, that's, but that's in his bond, that's in Fred's estimate. And there's a cost estimate just for for Kai's work.
I don't think so.
Yeah, four thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars.
No, his bond assumes there's a turnaround, right?
You have me?
Yeah, yours assumes there's a turnaround at the end, right?
I don't know how I can figure it out.
Oh, okay, um, right, correct, yes.
And this bond with easement.
The forty-six hundred.
Gets you, gets it to you to make it in line with the rest of the road and heading into phase three.
It, what's it, you said it, I don't know what it.
The road.
Come on, Andy.
What do you mean, I I don't know what preposition it, what you're referring to.
What are we talking about?
Talking about his driveway.
Exactly.
Fred's bond relates to the road. Does not include the forty-six hundred dollars that you mentioned.
Yeah, but part of that forty-six hundred dollars is the bond for the, for the, bringing the berm up and bringing it in line with the rest of the road. Because it's a turnaround right now.
No.
No, I don't, no, I don't have the berm going through there, it, it, the, what's been accepted is a turnaround.
Right.
So there is no further work on that turnaround.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And so this forty-six hundred is to get you, so if, say, phase three comes in and they have whatever, their twenty-four foot road, you know, there's not gonna be this big bump on turnaround, you need to bring it in line.
That's true. But it also has to do with landscaping, anyway.
Come on, Andy. I just wanna watch the process.
So do I, I'm sorry, I, I, you know.
Can I just ask one more question, I know we're all trying to get out of here, and just for my own, uh, record keeping, I'm gonna record, record this, I remember what we discussed.
Yeah, well, it's my video.
My assumption is, when the time comes to remove this, uh, temporary cul-de-sac, Andy will not be here. No offense, but I'm assuming it's gonna happen ten years down the road. So my assumption is, I'm coming to the town to execute on this easement. So the town will be on the hook for finishing grading the driveway, so we're all doing this so that the town has enough money to do that work. Do I mention that correctly?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Are you gonna be here in ten years, Andy?
What, when's phase three gonna be done?
You don't care, right?
I don't want the phase three.
Exactly.
Um, I, I, I.
So we're gonna probably be on the hook to getting that work done. Unless you're hanging around, you're gonna move in that nice house, yeah?
I didn't think the town was taking on the responsibility for the driveway.
Well, hopefully, we're not. But we have to assume that's why we do this, but but we have.
And I've never seen the town get involved with a driveway.
We hope we don't have to. We've never had a temporary turnaround for our short road acceptance either, so we're breaking new ground here.
Okay.
And 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 bottom line is, I wanna make sure the town is covered.
Yeah, for the expenses.
When, 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 when the work has to get done.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it's a couple of years from now, you're still around and you can take care of it, and the bond gets released and everybody's happy. Realistically, I have no, I have no idea.
Realistically, what probably happened is when the people are doing phase three, whoever it is.
You think they're gonna put the bill?
I think that, yeah, yeah, I think the planning board will. Well, no, the, the money's there, you're gonna have the money.
It's not the phase, what is the money from where? Yeah, the money's gonna be from this bond, which we're not gonna release until it's done.
That's our one, we're, 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 we're kinda going down a.
We're beating a dead horse, I think.
Oh, Andy.
Why do you keep saying you're a lady, like you're doing something wrong, I don't know, isn't it?
It just always turns into this.
But it's just so that, so that it's clear, though, so we're gonna be holding back and the bond be currently have the four thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-nine cents times the one point five, just that we're all clear on this, because I don't want us to keep coming back to this, this issue.
That's my understanding.
Andy, you agree with that? Okay, so we can move on from this particular subject then.
Thank you.
Um, yes.
So seven thousand forty and fifty-four cents.
How much do I enter? Um. We can take a record vote.
Why don't we, should we add it to this document?
Yeah, let's add it to the document on town council order. Okay.
Just so.
Add it to what, the easement document?
Yeah, why not? But it's clear.
Okay. What was the, what was the amount?
It's four thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Sixty-nine?
Sixty-nine, and.
Times one point five.
Yeah, which is seven thousand forty and fifty-four cents.
Why, so, why, why, why can't we not just bring this and include it in the entire thing?
Because this is gonna be a separate enduring easement until, or escrow until
Right.
the work gets done, whereas hopefully this gets closed out sooner. It makes the bookkeeping much cleaner, I think.
I agree.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right. What have we, uh, going through the main bond then? CME estimates. So what's new here, is this? This is what we saw last time, right?
No, Fred, I'm like.
You haven't seen mine yet.
Okay, so the CME's estimate's in red, yours are in black.
Correct.
You wanna go through Fred?
A number of the items, as you can see, we can go item by item if you want, is that the easiest way?
Sure.
Okay, so we have the same number of trees in the first line item, we have unit prices, we've been using that bond, that's since four hundred, they have it at three oh five, and there's a difference of three thousand there, give or take.
Yeah.
Okay, on the island plantings, we're basically the same number.
Yeah.
On the concrete bounds, um, there are three more that they have sixty-four, there are sixty-seven. Um, we've been wanting them at two fifty, and they have it at one fifty through there. Most of the, I think all the numbers come from contractors.
Right, Andy.
Okay, so there's a difference there of, um, seven thousand. The streetlights is the same, the fire system and signs is the same, the removal of the binder, um, I have, um, five hundred three yards more, I, um, took it from what Joe Lynch had written in an email.
That's just a section that needs to be redone.
There's, there's different places, that's removing binder completely. Um, the next line is removing binder where there's alligator cracking. One is called, is ravelling terminology that you might remember, heard Joe Lynch use.
Yep.
When we were out there, so that's that first one, so I'm at five hundred more yards at the same unit price. And on the next line, they didn't, I also included the, um, areas that there's alligator cracking, so basically I'm at five, seven hundred more, I'm at twelve fifty plus two fifty is, I'm fifteen hundred. They're at seven forty, so I'm doubling that, so that's another discrepancy between mine and what Fred Kuhn had put together, okay?
Yeah.
On the next one, the tunus binder pavement, um, figuring what we're milling and so forth, I come up with two hundred and fifty tons. They had a hundred and thirty-five tons, there's the difference there of twenty thousand in mine compared to fourteen thousand in theirs. The next line item's the same, one after that being the tunus concrete top course is the same, driveways and sidewalks the same, handicap ramps are the same, the batuminous berm, um, Fred had given me a, a listing of it, um, as you can see, he has, uh, sorry, I lost my place there, he has twenty-nine hundred twenty-eight feet. He had given me a listing of the batuminous berm, and, um, when I looked from station to station, and when I had added that up, um, we came out to fivey one, so that's the difference, I had fivey one hundred feet from what Fred had given me.
And that's, and that's the amount that when you walked through Fred, that he said that he agreed with you?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Um, so that's the, uh, another difference there, the next next item asphalt patching and crack sealing is the same, I have a little more on the drainage structures, I think they are, um, they have fifty dollars more per structure than they have, and that's where the three thousand, thirty-five hundred dollars comes in. And the next one's all the way down, they're basically the same. The next four, and then under the other items that they didn't have, they had, I'm sorry, so that, look at the comparison there, um, they were at two thirty, and I'm at two sixty-five, so thirty-five thousand. Then under, I, under items was the asphalt plans and removal of erosion control for another twelve thousand, it brings mine up to two seventy-seven eight to the two thirty. So the ones that I said are the difference, some of them are my estimation, some of them are the quantities, I don't think were correct, on the curving, for instance, on the alligator cracking, things like that. So that's where this stands. I met with Fred Kuhn a week ago Monday, and we revised it to this. And, um, I hadn't heard back, and I know he's gone now, but, so this is where it stands. I met him.
Can you send me a copy of that?
Sure.
That was produced by Fred, huh?
This, no, me.
Oh.
But he has, he has this, him, when we met, when I saw you Monday, we went over this, and I was just.
That was the, but.
No, that was the first time that I produced this.
Andy, did you have a copy of it?
No, no, I have a.
Oh, you have a.
I have that, no, no, I'm talking about Fred, you said Fred gave you a station to stand.
Oh, I only have a, um, a, um, hot coffee, he gave me when we were there that day. I can, can you use a rocks right now, is your machine on?
I can.
I'm sorry.
Is it all, what's that, is there's a, it's not like a full size, oh, sure.
He only gave me this, I don't have a.
I mean, Fred's still around.
Yeah, I know, so.
But he is gonna be moving a lot.
But I, I, I don't have an electronic. But I I I don't have an electronic for that, is what I'm saying. I don't think if he gave it to me that day we met.
So you're saying.
And I went and added up to forty-one hundred. No, mine did. It was just twenty-nine and here. And we went over that Monday. He gave it to me. We met Thursday, I believe.
But.
You and I and Fred. And then him and I met Monday when you were with the paving with Dan.
Yeah.
Right? And but he gave it to me that Thursday before.
You're confusing me. I when Fred gave you his estimate, the station to station on the curving, did it add up to forty-one hundred or twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine hundred.
Oh, he added up to twenty-nine.
Well, I no, I shouldn't say that. His estimate's at twenty-nine. I added that up myself and gave it to forty-one.
So he had a he had a math error.
I is, yes, right.
Okay.
On top of this, I know it was a point of discussion, but we, you know, we have the one point five multiplier.
Yep. What I'm gonna uh do now that I have this is I'm gonna try to uh work with my contractors between now and the next meeting and see if I'm able to get a a hundred percent of the work done so that we don't have an issue with the bond being increased as opposed to coming up with more money. If I get all the work done, the issue just goes away. But I would I would need, you know, for the money to be released when the work's done. Hopefully, and I'm not sure.
Well, we'll release up to ten percent of the original bond.
Um, the insurance policy is supposed to take care of that ten percent, huh? Cause the ten percent is for damage. It's not a performance.
I just received it last week and I sent it to town council and they'll have it reviewed by our next meeting.
The insurance policy?
He told me in that he would definitely have it reviewed.
Insurance policy, by the way, is for seventy thousand dollars for the damage.
Right.
I just use that to figure.
Oh.
It's different than the bond money you're holding now.
I got it.
Cause it's not performing. This is after the work is already done.
So what do we hold exactly?
Uh, it's roughly two hundred and fifty-four thousand.
Right, so when you add the one point five to the two twenty-seven, that is.
Two seventy.
Two seventy-seven?
Yeah, to the two seventy-seven.
Four sixteen, seven ninety.
What's the number?
Four sixteen, seven ninety.
So you would have to cover the gap of four sixteen as we're released, you know, four sixteen to two fifty. But you're saying if you do it all at once, then I guess it's not an issue.
What you're saying is let's say he's doing one item from one through ten before he really asks for looking at the bond again.
Yeah.
Then those items aren't included in the bond.
If he does.
Item items, the first ten, just as a, not first ten, doesn't matter what they are.
Yeah.
So and then he he's not, I think, Andy, let me let me tell me tomorrow. He's saying, let's not discuss this anymore tonight. When I come back next time, I'm gonna have items, first ten items done.
So it's not it's not an issue.
Half.
So it won't even be above it won't even be above the two fifty, then?
Well, no, whatever it is, it is. It might still.
I'm gonna try and get.
But he's gonna try and get it below, yes.
I got it. That's fine.
Almost like we never had this meeting, never decided today.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, that's great. If you can do that, I'd be in great shape.
Right, well, that's. Yeah.
It's possible, I mean.
That'd be great. I mean, that's what we asked of the other one, essentially.
So I think you understand at this point that, well, I guess we can talk about it at the next meeting, but the board, at least at the last meeting, was holding to the one point five multiplier.
Right.
And it sounds like you're fine with it.
Well, I'm not fine with it.
I'm not fine. I have to try to, uh, I mean, keep in mind, if you're holding two fifty-five, I don't know how to do the math backwards, but at one that
I understand.
meant means that the previous bond estimate was probably one fifty or one seventy. So so we have a surprise here. It's nobody's fault. Um, but obviously the bond.
It happens.
You know, so we.
Yeah, we are.
And we also are meeting you halfway with the partial road acceptance. So we're giving, taking everybody.
Yeah, we just wanna help get the same goal.
Yep.
It's not like we're dead.
So you're available on the twenty-sixth?
Is that the next meeting?
That's the next meeting.
Of June?
Of June. Okay, good. Exciting.
I'll try to get a.
Yeah, I hope that happens.
Yeah. I will report back to you, um, you know.
And what will insurance policy be reviewed by the twenty-sixth?
It will be reviewed by that. And then so Fred, what is your schedule for the next couple of weeks, before you have availability to get out there or your work that gets done by the contractor?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Or maybe you know.
No definite how, no definite what we've done in the past.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're not not standing yet. But we'll at least down here before the next meeting.
Perfect.
More work. I say I have to now go to the contractors and try to figure out, like, if I did all the work all at once, they're not gonna have a big waiting time, you know what I mean?
Okay.
Awesome, Andy. Sounds like we're very agreeable.
What?
It's a very agreeable meeting.
Good.
Yeah.
Talk the Bruins away.
Yeah, it's reasonable.
What?
Yeah, we all just wanna go watch the Bruins.
End of the first period, we're down by ten.
Does anybody know this one?
Really, yeah?
Yep.
What's?
Two two substingles, end of the first.
Got the scotch from the free.
The game is coming back to haunt them.
That's stupid. We take rest, yeah. Let's send it. Okay.
Andy, sing off.
No, we're good. We're good. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you very much.
And we'll return.
Second.
Okay, everybody.
Thanks, Rick.